Okay, it's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Stand the flag salute.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the infinite justice for all.
Okay, let the record reflect that Commissioners Plotnick, Henderson, and Worcester are present, and Commissioners Ladish and Michele are not. The first order of business is the selection of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. I am neither one of those. I've just been here the longest. So, I guess my question would be, who among the Commissioners is interested in becoming a Chairperson? And I would say upfront that I am not. Mr. Ladish has given us a handout, and there's copies up there with his position, because he's not here. And I'm not going to try to summarize it, but he does say that if, one of the things he says, "If I were there, I would nominate Michelle Plotnick to be Chair." And my question would be whether Ms. Plotnick would be willing to do that.
I would be willing to consider doing it, but I'm not ready to say for sure. I have been away from the Planning Commission for four years. I feel like I need to kind of get back in the groove here before I volunteer to be Chair.
Brett, would you like to be Chair?
I'm very new to this. I would prefer to have somebody more experienced. Unfortunately, they're not here. It came down to it. I guess I would actually nominate Michelle if it came down to it.
Gosh, why am I here today? I saw this coming. So, Kelly, you're really not interested.
Well, would we prefer to continue this, that particular item until we have more Commissioners present?
Yes, I was going to suggest that we continue this to our next meeting when all five of us will be here, and that you serve as the interim Chair for today.
A second. Okay, is there any public comment on that suggestion? Okay, hearing none, I suppose I will act as Chair of this meeting. Are there any agenda changes? Okay, then we'll go to the public comment period, and the public may address the Commission on Land Use Issues, not on the agenda. Five minutes per person, 15 minutes per topic. The Commission will not take action on any matters that are brought up during public comments, so does anyone have any public comment to offer? Hearing none, we will go to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the January 24th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. There was one typo, an item, E, very last paragraph, there's the third line, under motion, under public comment, hereby finding should be thereby finding, that's been corrected. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected unless somebody else has any changes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Okay, we'll proceed to the public hearings, the first of which is 2018-065 zoning amendment for Mark Bolger. And I would ask upfront, Mr. Bolger, if you are willing to have the Commission hear this matter with only three of us present?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll proceed, and that's yours, isn't it, Mr. Spear?
Yes, it is. All right. As you said, this is Project 2018-065, this is a zoning amendment for Mark Bolger. The property in question is located about a mile east of Railroad Flat Road, off of Banner Road. There's the map here. And here is an aerial view of the property. That's the two parcels in the center of the screen there. So, as I said before, this is a zoning amendment. It is for two contiguous parcels, the total 80 acres or 40 acres apiece. They're currently zoned unclassified, and the request is to change them to general agriculture or A1. In the general plan, here's the parcels outlined in red there, and the natural resource lands, wildlife botanical area. What that is, the natural resource lands is set aside for farming, ranching, and timber practices as compatible uses. Compatible zones in that area are timber production, agricultural preserve, general agriculture, and residential agriculture. The wildlife botanical section is for the protection of the Railroad Flat deer herd, which are sensitive to human encroachment, and there is a 40-acre minimum parcel size in the wildlife botanical area, which these parcels do adhere to. In the forthcoming proposed general plan update, that hasn't been finalized yet, but it's always good to look at it since we are somewhat close to getting that taken care of. They will be under the resource production, which are for agricultural operations, and typical uses are crop production, orchards, grazing, and raising of livestock. Compatible zones in that designation are timber production, ag preserve, general ag, and general forest. As far as zoning is concerned, here's the local zoning in the area. Lots of unclassified out there, as you can see, the blue, but there's also a lot of ag preserve, general agriculture, and residential agriculture in the area. As I said before, the current zoning is unclassified. The unclassified zone is meant to apply only until more precise zoning is adopted. It's not meant to be a permanent zoning designation. The proposed zoning is general agriculture. As I said before, it's a resource zone. It's for general farming. Agriculture is the primary emphasis over residences, and it gives more protections under right farm. The surrounding area, there are thousands of acres in the Williamson Act in the surrounding area, hundreds of acres utilized for personal scale of ranching and farming. As you saw before, it's a mix of unclassified and various resource zones like ag preserve and general agriculture. And if you zoom out a little bit, you can see how much property is in the Williamson Act. Williamson Act lands, you are, annually, you have to prove that you are making money off your agriculture, that it is viable agricultural land. And the fact that there's so much Williamson Act land in the area shows that this location is primed to be general agriculture. The area, there's the CAL FIRE FRAP fire hazard. FRAP, for those who don't know, stands for Fire Resource Assessment Program. It's basically how prone an area is to wildfire. Unfortunately, this area is quite prone to wildfire. This is the screenshot of the FRAP fire hazard for that area. But if utilized for agriculture, it actually reduces available fire fuels and makes the area safer as far as wildfires concerned. This project was, an initial study was performed under the California Environmental Quality Act. There are no significant impacts were found. There was a 30-day circulation period of that environmental document, and no comments were received. And so, to conclude, that this is a zoning amendment from unclassified to general agriculture. General agriculture zone for these parcels is consistent with the general plan. It's encouraged by both the zoning code and the general plan. It continues to protect the wildlife in the area, and is compatible with surrounding uses, and reduces available fire fuels. And as a result, we'd like to recommend that you, that you pass Resolution 2019-007 to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt the sequel determination and approve the zoning amendment.
Any questions of Mr. Spear from members of the Commission? Okay, Mr. Bolger, would you like to make a presentation?
I'll keep this short and sweet. I hate unclassified. I've got six parcels, and I'm slowly rezoning all of them. I'd like to thank staff for their wonderful presentation on this. I already went through this process on the two adjoining parcels that I own, the 118 acres, through which I accessed these two 40s. Had I owned these at the time of the last rezone, I would have liked to get this all done at once, but unfortunately, that didn't happen that way. So, the main focus for me is having homogeneous zoning with the 200 acres that I have there. That's about all I have to add. If there's any questions from the Commission, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Bolger? Okay, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment with respect to this matter?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. We support this rezone of 80 acres from unclassified to general agriculture for the reasons given by planning staff. Namely, first, amending the zoning of the subject property to A1 will increase the agricultural viability of the land. Second, the general plan encourages the preservation of land for agricultural uses, so it is consistent with the general plan. Third, by preserving open space and minimizing residential development, habitat for the Railroad Flat deer herd will be maintained, and the migration routes not disturbed. And fourth, the zoning of the land will allow the right to farm and flexibility. And fifth, the future land used in the area is slated to be designated as working land, so this will be consistent with future land use, so it's an all-around win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this matter? Mr. Spear, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Any follow-up questions by anybody?
No questions.
Okay, then we'll close the hearing and bring it to the Commission for discussion and deliberation. Okay, are there any suggestions with respect to the form of the resolution?
No.
Okay, I had a couple that I communicated to Mr. Spear already. And have you, have you made any changes to it?
Yeah, I, uh, on the, there's the sequel one, make it consistent with the language in the initial study that you pointed out. That instead of "will have a significant effect on the environment," it changed to "could have significant effect on the environment," because that's what the sequel determination states, so that means the same. And was there another one? Oh, and in the evidence for number two, you talked to me about that with the zoning. You pointed out that the RR and RA zones aren't necessarily in the immediate vicinity because they're over a mile away, so I took those out as well.
Okay, so that sentence would read, "Parcels in the immediate vicinity of the subject parcel are zoned U, paren unclassified, AP, paren agricultural preserve, and A1, general agriculture," period?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the proposed amendments? And I think we're ready for the staff recommendation.
All right. Staff recommends that you pass a motion to sign Resolution 2019-007 recommending the Board of Supervisors to adopt the sequel determination and approve the A2018-065 as amended.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Hearing none, motion carries three to zero.
Yeah, who was the first and second?
Yeah, I was so moved. Second.
Now we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Annette. Okay, the next matter is 2006-062, tentative parcel map for Peter Vermeulen.
Madeline Flandreau is presenting that. She will be just a minute.
Okay, we'll just wait on that.
Would you guys like me to just start my presentation, and I will see if I can get the PowerPoint presentation to come up? But it doesn't show my... No, look. I'm just going to begin, and I will try again in a minute, see if this thing loads. My apologies. Madeline Flandreau, good morning. This morning, I am presenting Project Number 2006-062, which is the tentative parcel map for Peter Vermeulen. The location of this parcel is 5858 Highway 49 in Angels Camp, which is APN 064-021-035, and is just north of the Stanislaus River branch of New Malone's reservoir. There it is. All right, let me catch up here. Here's our location of the parcel, just south of Carson Hill, right off of Highway 49. Here's the aerial view. The parcel is currently undeveloped, and consists of moderate to moderately steep slopes, non-native grasses, and scattered blue oaks. The project description, this is a tentative parcel map to divide 50 acres into two parcels. Proposed parcel A is, would be, 25.17 acres, and proposed parcel B would be 24.83 acres in size, and both are proposed for residential use. In conjunction with the tentative parcel map, the applicant filed the request to modify the road standards to increase the maximum grade for a minimum service road from 12% to 16%. A little project history, we originally received an application from the previous landowner, who was Gerald Nielsen, who intended to subdivide the parcel into five parcels. In addition to the Nielsen project, the Planning Department received three additional applications for land divisions of the adjacent parcels, for a total of 18 lots, so that, so the entire project included, and I apologize, this image is a little bit fuzzy, but you can see, our parcel is 035. So, it included 032, which is the parcel above, 033, which is the parcel just to the west, and 034, which is the parcel adjacent to the south. The processing of the Nielsen application was contingent on the processing of the other three applications due to access. All of the parcels are accessed by a single encroachment off of Highway 49. And the projects did not end up being processed due to supplemental documentation that was never received by our department. And on August 9th, 2017, the previous landowner, Gerald Nielsen, transferred the TPM application to the buyers, Peter Vermeulen and Anuj Agarwal. And they subsequently submitted the revised tentative parcel map, which is just dividing it into two parcels. General plan and zoning, the project has a general plan land use designation of natural resource lands, timberlands slash mineral resources. It's 2A slash dam inundation, and is zoned general agriculture, which is A1. The proposed land division is consistent with the general plan and zoning code. The proposed parcel sizes are both over 20 acres, which complies with the minimum 20-acre parcel size for an A1 zone property. The proposed land division would allow for the future construction of one single-family residence for parcel, as well as accessory structures and other activities associated with construction, such as grading, road encroachment, road and encroachment improvements. The road modification request, access to the parcel is currently via a 60-foot wide easement through the adjacent parcel to the north, which is APN 064-021-032, which has the encroachment off of Highway 49. So, the project will require a CAL Trans encroachment permit to meet all the CAL Trans standards for a private road approach. The project proposes to improve the easement on and off-site to meet the county standards for a minimum service road, which is template G. And these improvements will ensure that access to the project site is adequate and meets the minimum county road standards. A road modification was submitted with the project application to increase the standard maximum grade for minimum service road from 12% to 16%, and the Public Works Department has accepted this modification request. The project was reviewed pursuant to SEQA. Staff prepared an initial study, negative declaration, which was distributed for a 30-day review between January 8th, 2019, and February 8th, 2019. One comment letter was received from CAL Trans, which reiterated their comments regarding the encroachment permit off of Highway 49. The comments provided did not warrant revisions to the document or modify significance levels for the impact areas discussed. As in addition to this, I drafted a SEQA memo, which I have copies of. Did you all receive my email regarding this? Excellent. There was an error that was made in the initial study in Section 1, aesthetics. Section 1, Discussion Point C, less than significant impact, states that there is a potential for a slight degrade of the existing visual character, whereas from the lake, the view was a rolling hill, there will now be two single-family residences on top of the hill, and a view of cuts and fills from the road. A mitigation measure is an approved road modification agreement that allows for a reduction in grading cuts and fills. The error in this document was the use of a mitigation measure found in the last sentence of this discussion. The SEQA document is a negative declaration, and therefore, there is no, there are no mitigations for this. Therefore, the discussion for Section 1, aesthetics, Point C, should say, "Less than significant impact, there is a potential for a slight degrade of the existing visual character, whereas from the lake, the view was a rolling hill, there will now be two single-family residences on top of the hill, and a view of cuts and fills from the road. A road modification agreement that allows a reduction in grading cuts and fills is part of the project description. Reduction of the road standard will reduce the amount of grading necessary, which will limit visual impacts." Hopefully, that covers all bases there. So, as the road modification is part of the project, this error doesn't change the analysis of the project. And I wanted to include a street view Google image to show you the encroachment off of Highway 49, so you can understand the access to the project. So, in conclusion, the proposed tentative parcel map is consistent with the current county general plan and the county zoning code. An engineer from Weber Geo and Associates, Inc., has determined that the modification will not compromise traffic safety, and the Public Works Department concurred with the modification request and recommends approval. And project-related impacts were found to be less than significant. And that's my presentation. You guys have questions? And I believe the, the landowners are both present, as well as their agent, Ron Kopf, if you have questions for them.
There appear to be no questions from the Commissioners to staff. Now is the time for the applicant or the applicant's representative to make a presentation, if they so choose.
Good morning. My name is Ron Kopf. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the presentation. We just wanted to say that we do agree with the points that were brought up by the Planning Department related to this project. There's been a lot of time spent looking at the road, the access road into this. The reason for the increased grades are to reduce the visual impacts, maintain as much of the natural vegetation as possible. There's also a lot of vegetation on the site from a visual impact standpoint, and with the meadows. The landowners have been very careful in looking at where some of those house locations may be to work with the meadows and use the screening of the existing trees and the vegetation as much as possible from that standpoint as well. The street out front with the CAL Trans, you know, when we go forward and do the, do the road improvements, we'll work with CAL Trans on that encroachment permit. There is a very wide section out there, and a lot of visual in both directions from a site distance standpoint, so that seems to be very accommodating with that. So, with that, we do have the landowners here, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, if there are any. So, thank you.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? And I have none. Is there any public comment with respect to this matter?
Good morning again. Colleen Platt, MyValleySprings.com. Basically, a little bit of a question. I understand there was road, road standard modifications to reduce the visual impacts, and I understand that grading was part of it. Was there also, I think I read in the Public Works condition, something about the width of the roads, was that also reduced and okayed by Public Works to reduce the visual impacts of the cut and fill of the access roads to the properties? Maybe you could just explain that part of it a little bit? Thank you.
Okay, does staff have any comments in response to that public comment?
If you'd like, I can address that point. There weren't any reductions.
Go ahead.
existing vegetation to reduce the, the grading impacts. And then we worked with the adjacent landowner on the required easements that were needed for that to accommodate it. So, thank you.
So maybe the confusion is that the width of graded impacted area will be narrower because you're allowed a steeper, Colleen.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Are there any follow-up questions by any of the commissioners to the applicant or the staff, or the applicant's representative? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. So who wants to go first?
I'm ready to hear the recommendation. Anybody else have anything? Are you ready?
Just honestly, I have a question about the water supply. In the event of a flood, land fire, and there, I mean, other than the lake, is there any requirements of storage tanks or anything for water?
I think that's outside the purview of this action, because that's a requirement when you get a building permit.
I don't, honestly, no. And I don't have, my knowledge of how that works is not that granular. I don't know if it's outside of the purview.
Yeah, I believe it is, because that will be addressed as part of, whenever you do a structure on the property, you'll have to look at your water supply.
Okay, are there any comments by any of the commissioners on the draft resolution? Okay, I have a bunch.
Go Kelly!
And I've already communicated these to Madam Funtro, but I should probably go over them. And some are just grammatical, some are not. In the first whereas clause, where it speaks of requesting approval of a tentative parcel map to divide the 50 acres into two parcels, et cetera, we would change that to requesting approval of a tentative parcel map to divide a 50-acre parcel into two parcels. In the third whereas clause, the last portion, more particularly described as APM 064-021-035, insert the word which before is, so it reads, which is a portion of East One Half of Section 23, et cetera. That's it on page 1. On page 2 of 8, at the very end of paragraph 2, it needs a period after the sentence, "The minimum parcel size proposed via this map is 24.83 acres." On page 4, condition 3-3, the first sentence says, "On-site grading shall be in accordance with county and state codes and approved plans as outlined in section C below," but there isn't any section C below. And so I would suggest striking the phrase, "as outlined in section C below." Does that work with staff?
Or just "as outlined below"?
I was going to amend it to specifically call out the section that it was referring to, since I had renumbered some of the conditions from public works. So section C is actually comment 3-10, where it says, "Improvement plans shall be submitted and approved by public works prior to the beginning of construction or filing of the parcel map."
So that would be the change?
Yes.
And on page 5 of 8, under condition 3-10, J, there's a reference to getting permits from fish and game. It's no longer fish and game, it's fish and wildlife. Page 6, condition 3-13, under the A and the B, need a period at the end of each of those. 3-14, it's a paragraph C, where it reads, "Encroachment permit from the state," capitalized state, because it is every place else. And then I had a question on...
Actually, that encroachment permit is from Caltrans, correct? The encroachment's onto the state highway?
Okay, on page 7, under 4-1C, the last sentence states, "Well completion reports shall not be used to determine source capacity." And I guess my question there was, why not, if they had all the required information?
And I asked Paul Ferriani from Environmental to explain this to me a little bit further, and he said, "When a well is developed, a domestic well, they only do a short pump test, maybe a few hours," whereas a source capacity report, it's a 72-hour pump test that's required. So that's really the difference. There's more data that's collected from that source capacity report than just a regular well drilling.
Well, but, since a paragraph B on the same page specifies what you need for a source capacity pump test slash report, minimum 5 GPM for 24 hours or until 7,200 gallons of water have been pumped, whichever is less. And so if your well completion report did that...
They don't do that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they're not the same test.
All right, I'll let it pass, at least I will. Although it doesn't, still doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because they could do it all at once. Last one on the resolution is on the last page. There's an example that didn't make sense to me. It reads, "Example colon, if a well produces only 3.0 GPM per in 3 gallons times 60 minutes times 24 hours equals 4320 minus 7,200 equals 2880." Mathematically, that doesn't work. So...
I clarified it. I put, "If a well produces only 3 gallons per minute," open parentheses, "3 gallons per minute times 60 minutes per hour times 24 hours equals 4,320 gallons, and then 7, 7,200 gallons minus 4,320 gallons equals 2,880 gallons." Does that math cover?
No, the math is reversed somehow.
The numbers are backward.
Because 20 minus 7,200 would be a negative number.
Right. The way that environmental health puts it in there is not very clear. They get to the right numbers, but it's not very clear the way they've written it.
That's, that's why she fixed it. Okay. So I think we're ready for the recommendation.
Staff recommends that the planning commission pass a motion authorizing the chair to sign resolution 2019-088 as amended, adopting the negative declaration and approving tentative parcel map 2006-062 and the road modification based upon the findings contained therein. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. None, motion carries 3-0. I think we may as well simply proceed to the last matter on the calendar, which is 2018-024 for the Calaveras Humane Society. And I think that's Ms. Kevins. And this would be a general plan amendment, a zoning amendment, a conditional use permit, and the plan development for the Calaveras Humane Society.
Before we get started, can we point out to the applicant that you need a unanimous decision today, because there are only three of us here? So it's up to you if you would like to continue this to our next meeting, when there will be five commissioners, hopefully.
Yeah.
You're good. Want to move forward?
Yeah, the representative, and I spoke this morning, and since all four items, action of all four items are dependent on two items that require board approval, then the entire project will go up to the board with a recommendation from you only. Julie, you want to hit the lights for me, please? You're the new light girl. Okay. All right, here we go. So as just described, we are about ready to discuss application 2018-024, which happens to be a general plan amendment, zoning amendment, conditional use permit, plan development for the Calaveras Humane Society. The project area is located at 1209 Highway 49, technically Angels Camp. That is approximately a mile and a half northeast, excuse me, northwest of the intersection of State Highway 49 and Highway 4 in Angels Camp. Just for a visual, here's an aerial photo of the location of the parcel. If you can see the little, the red arrow there in the middle on the end of that pond, that is the subject parcel. So all of the land use entitlements that we'll be discussing today are necessary for the proposed animal shelter. The project consists of a general plan amendment from residential suburban to commercial recreation, for the purpose of a zoning amendment from the current C2 PD, which is general commercial plan development, to an RCPD, which is rural commercial plan development zoning, for the purpose of approving a conditional use permit to permit the proposed animal shelter. In addition, this parcel being in a PD combining zone, we have to take consideration of the development standards and aesthetics of the project through the plan development permit. So starting with the general plan, the property is actually located in the City of Angels sphere of influence. Currently, it's designated as residential suburban, and as previously explained, the proposal is to amend the general plan to commercial recreation. So in case there's any confusion over what exactly the sphere is, it is an area of land that represents the potential to be incorporated into the City of Angels Camp. Not to, to be confused, it is still within the jurisdiction of the county, although general plan policy requires us to consult with the city for any land use issues concerning properties within the sphere, which we did so, and the city actually made a verbal and a written comment that they have no objections to the project as proposed. So currently, the parcel is designated residential suburban. Oddly enough, compatible zoning in the residential suburban land use designation actually is general agriculture, which, for those of you who don't know, is our main resource zone. Additionally, residential agriculture, which is a zone district that applies equal emphasis to agriculture and residential uses. And the commercial zone that is existing, C2, is not actually compatible in the current residential suburban land use designation. So the proposal is to change the designation to commercial recreation. Compatible zoning noted in the commercial recreation designation is recreation, which obviously allows recreational uses, in addition to rural commercial. Rural commercial is a zoning that is, is said to be applied to small towns, community centers, in addition to isolated areas of the county allowing commercial, commercial activities. The proposed base zone of RC is the only commercial zone that is compatible within the entire Angels sphere of influence. So here's how the general plan map looks today. The green area is, is the residential suburban designation. The white area that is noted as AE is agricultural estate. Just for reference, the agricultural estate designation, consistent zoning is general agriculture only. The pink area represents the City of Angels. The little OS underscore RC is a reference to the Capella Park recreational facility there, just in, within the city limits of Angels Camp. And as said once before, we don't necessarily need to make findings of consistency with the general plan update, but knowing that we are very much into the process of our general plan update, I think it is important to understand where our land use is headed. Obviously, we have not adopted the, the general plan update yet, otherwise, we wouldn't be having this, this absolute discussion. But, just so you know, the, the general plan update actually has designated this parcel as a commercial office, and we are finding, unless changes are made, we are finding C1, C2, which is local commercial, general commercial, CP, which is professional office, and RC, which is the proposed zoning, recreation, rural commercial, all to be consistent within that new designation of commercial slash office. Just to look about further, all of the green area will be designated as resource production and working land, and once again, compatible zoning in those land use designations will be our resource zones of general agriculture, agriculture preserve, general forests, as well as timber production zones. The turquoisey blue color represents a rural transition designation, which will be consistent with rural residential and residential agriculture zonings. And the, the light colored, it actually looks white on the screen, but it's yellow. Down to the south of the subject parcel is proposed to be designated rural residential, and the only zoning that will be compatible in the rural residential designation will be rural residential zoning. So zoning and land use on the subject parcel, again, we are, the zone change is from, is being proposed from the general commercial plan development zoning, which currently does not permit an animal shelter. The proposal is to go to a rural commercial plan development zoning with approval of a conditional use permit will allow an animal shelter. So for the past 37 years, county records have identified various small businesses on the subject parcel, ranging from the 19, I believe, 82 Angels Camp Veterinary Clinic, when the parcel was originally zoned C2. Various times, it's been chiropractic doctors' offices, exercise facilities, in addition to an actual small distillery. So that kind of shows that this parcel has been historically used for commercial uses. Surrounding land use and zoning, I kind of took it far out, because there's really not a lot to discuss if I didn't. A one-mile radius, if you'll notice that we've got, here's a map as we go ahead and discuss this. Various zonings from unclassified, A1, rural residential, residential agriculture, and even ag preserve, in addition to the... even ag preserve, in addition to the interim zone of unclassified, are all zones within a one-mile radius of the subject parcel. Land uses in the surrounding areas consist of open space being utilized for agricultural grazing land, in addition to large lot residential parcels, and we've got some commercial activity, not much. Just to the, what would be the south of the subject parcel, we've got a commercial parcel zone for, and actually consisting of a mini storage warehouse, that would be the Grub Steak Village mini storage. Just down the road from the subject parcel to the northwest would be the Spence Ranch Feed and Supply. The parcel is currently zoned A1, but nevertheless, the feed supply store is a permitted use in that zone, but it is a commercial business. Down the road even further off of Deer Creek Road, we've got the most recent, or I should say, the current veterinary hospital, which is Angels Camp Veterinary Hospital. They are in the residential agriculture zone. So as before, there's not much commercial zoning out there, with the exception of the mini storage, but there is sparse commercial type uses. So referencing the conditional use permit for the animal shelter, once again, the proposal is to go to the rural commercial zoning for the purpose of the animal shelter. The zoning code actually does not define animal shelter. The closest definition we have for animal shelter is a commercial kennel. They don't meet all of the definition of a commercial kennel, but that's kind of the best we can do because we've got commercial kennel and private kennel. Knowing that they will have public activity that really, and the animals are not owned by themselves, they kind of throw them into the commercial kennel category, for lack of better definition. If we look at where commercial kennels are allowed elsewhere in the zoning, you'll find that they are conditional use and very minimal numbers of zoning designations. It is allowed in the ag preserve as a conditional use. It's also allowed in the general agricultural zoning as a conditional use, in addition to the rural commercial zoning as a conditional use. Those are the only three zonings you'll find a commercial kennel permitted in this, in our zoning code. So as kind of referenced before, obviously, when you compare where the zones allowed a commercial kennel, you'll see that a commercial kennel is best suited in rural areas of the county, isolated from community centers, and isolated from medium and high-density residential development. Condition limitations, those can be necessary to reduce or eliminate potential environmental effects. In addition, we can apply conditions to a conditional use permit necessary to protect the public health and welfare of the public. So conditions we have applied to the animal shelter, if you so choose to make a recommendation to approve. Under the project description, we've kind of rolled in some of the, some of the project description that we found necessary to actually further define the project, and that was in reference to the numbers of dogs and cats. So the facility is capable of housing 12 dogs and 24 cats. The application description also described the dogs as being kept indoors at night. We rolled those into conditions of approval, as I said before, to further define the actual project as, as applied in the application. In conformance with the site plan, the condition will apply that they, any expansion of the defined use will require a modification to the conditional use permit. So if for some reason they want to expand the facility to house additional dogs or cats, or even maybe propose not to keep dogs outdoors or indoors at night, then that would require approval from you of a modified conditional use permit. In addition, we've also got a Caltrans requirement for an encroachment permit, which they have already commenced the permit process, and it's my understanding that they are very close to finalizing that permit. One of the conditions from Caltrans was a requirement of the 20-foot rolling public gate to remain open during business hours to eliminate stacking of vehicles out into the Caltrans road right of way. Other various conditions included, will include the merger of the legal parcels on the, on the one APN. So during our review of the application, we discovered that there are actually two legal parcels that encumber that entire area proposed for the animal shelter. They have already done a lot line adjustment and recorded the map, so those parcels are legally merged, and we now have one legal parcel. Previously, the boundary line actually ran through the middle of the facility itself. They will also have to be in compliance with all applicable provisions of Title VI, which is enforced through the Animal Control Department of the county. So here's a picture, image of the proposed remodel. Here's a site plan of the, of the subject parcel, and all of this is in your packet. You've all got full-size maps of these images as well. So under the plan development permit review, again, we are looking only at site development and aesthetics. What triggered this was the exterior changes proposed for the building. They have five new outdoor dog enclosures, as well as an outdoor enclosure for cats. There's been no proposed expansion of the existing building itself. It is all just interior and exterior remodel with the addition of the fence enclosures for the dogs. They included new window openings. They had to do some necessary structure modifications. They have proposed mineral concrete siding, which will look like resemble wood. In addition, they are going to reface the columns in the front of the building with So here again, it's a little hard to see on the PowerPoint, but all of these images are in your full-size packet. Building elevations. Proposed signage was pretty simple. They didn't ask for a lot. This is a freestanding, single-sided side, a single-sided sign. The maximum signage allowed is 60 square feet, but they're proposing a very minimal, less than 12-square-foot size sign. But nevertheless, this is what they're proposing. So on its face, it meets the requirements set forth in the code for signage. Off-street parking, the standards actually do not apply. They only apply for the conversion of single-family residences, which this is not, or if they were expanding the footprint of the building, expanding the capacity of the building, and that was not the case either. So the parking standards, generally speaking, did not apply. They are, as far as the improvements are concerned to their parking lot, they are improving the two encroachments through the Caltrans permit process. They are proposing two entrances, one 20-foot rolling gate, which is the public access, and then they have another service access, which will have a 10-foot swing gate. The project is proposing to install a handicap-accessible compliant parking space per code, but other than that, there will be no other parking lot improvements. Under the landscaping section of the code, the zoning itself only requires 5% landscaping, but the plan development combining zone actually kicks it up a notch and requires us 10% of the disturbed area to be planted in new landscaping. So the minimum landscaping required for this plan is 850 square feet, where they have proposed 955 square feet of landscaping. They propose a perimeter planting strip that will, once planted, will screen the parking lot per code. There is currently no landscape ordinance to regulate either the design of a landscape area or the types of plants. Under a sequoia exemption, 13, 15-304, I found an exemption if we, if they propose to plant water-efficient plants, and if they plant what we are referring to as a fire-resistant landscaping. So because of the exemption, we went ahead and applied those as conditions of the PD This is their proposed fencing, same fencing as you saw in the, in the original image that we've already looked at of the front of the building. It is a reinforced, single-curved steel wire, approximately 62 inches high, black in color, and it's my understanding that the gates will be constructed of the same material. We did find a, we are, we have processed this under a categorical exemption, actually several of them. 15-301, under existing facilities. 15-303, the conversion of small structures. In addition to 15-304, for minor alterations. And generally speaking, 15-061, that we have found no possible environmental effects with the proposed project. So in conclusion, amending the general plan and the zoning will create consistency and compatibility, not only between the general plan and zoning, which we do not have now, but it will also create consistency with the surrounding area. The animal shelter is referenced as a commercial kennel, again, is best suited in rural areas, which is where the parcel is located, in a rural area of the county. The county, or I should say, the City of Angels concurs with the staff's recommendation to approve the project with only one caveat, and that's that we retain the PD combining zone, which will allow them future, future opportunity to review any potential future plans for development of the property. Conditions of the CUP are in place to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The exterior modifications are compatible with the natural environment. Since we do not have any, any design guidelines adopted for this particular area, kind of leaves this up to our discretion, and we feel that with the proposed modifications, there will be a compatibility with the surrounding area, specifically the natural environment on the particular parcel. The site development needs all the code requirements referenced in the plan development section of the code, and again, there are no agency concerns with the project, and therefore, staff's recommendation to you is to, is to recommend to the board approval of all four actions.
Are there any questions of staff, by the commissioners?
Holy moly.
Now's the time for the applicant or the applicant's representative to make a presentation if they choose.
Good morning. I'm Andy Fleece with Aspen Street Architects. I'm here representing the applicant, and also here in attendance is Dean Morris, the construction contractor. I'd like to thank the staff for your presentation and for helping, helping the applicant and me through this process. It's been, it's been kind of convoluted at times, and we've gotten through it. I just wanted to let you know I'm here for any questions you might have. One minor correction I just wanted to make is that the, the rock cladding of the columns facing the highway, that's not actually happening, and that the vertical, the wood posts are new, but they would not have wood cladding, and that is consistent with the building permit as we currently have approved. So I just wanted to make that clarification, and that's also consistent with the rendering imagery that we have presented today.
Could you sign in to, could you sign in on the sign-in sheet?
Yes.
And are there any questions from the commission here? Gina, the change you just referenced, does that require any changes to the documentation?
I believe, I believe it will. I'm trying to get there.
It's in the description. It's in there somewhere.
I think it's in the, it's in the project description.
Yeah, I didn't notice that that was still in the report until this morning. Just wanted to confirm.
It's on page six of 12, and it says, in the bottom of the last paragraph, and it says, "And refacing of columns with new rock veneer could just be removed."
That's in the staff report?
Yeah.
And the question is, is there anything in the resolutions that
I'm looking, I don't
we would have to have changed?
There is. Re-refer to structure alterations. Oh. Under the evidence on finding number one, there's a reference to column, column refacing. It just says column refacing. It doesn't indicate.
Could we just change refacing to replacement? Does that?
I can do that. I think it carries through on
Yeah.
All of them, because that's the, that's the sequoia exemption, and so I applied that verbatim to all, so I'll have to change that on all resolutions.
So what would be the proposed change?
To replace the word refacing with replacing?
With replacement.
So windows and column replacement will only alter the appearance of the building. That's how it will read.
Any other questions? Anything you'd like to add?
None at this time.
Shouldn't alter actually be improve? I mean, it seems like we're not really saying anything to say alterations will only alter the appearance of the building. It seems like we should say we'll only improve the appearance of the building, which was the intention, was to improve the appearance of the building.
That sounds a lot better.
And possibly, it's just because the site plans were so small, it reduced it in the public version. The fencing, in the staff report, it says, "The front of the property will be fenced for the safety of the animals of the shelter." And I couldn't tell on the site plan whether it was only the front that will be fenced, and there will be no fencing along the back or the sides. And if that's so, then I'm concerned for the safety of the animals being walked out there, because a dog can just pull off a leash and still run around the front fence.
The, the images in the site plan only illustrated the fencing in the front, but maybe the, the project proponent could further explain whether or not they're going to have the entire parcel fenced.
Yeah, or at least some area that you can walk the animals without, you know, worrying about them running off into the highway.
Could you, could you come up to the right, make your comments here?
Sorry, I'm Alan Dodson. I'm one of the board members from CHS. So there's existing fencing on the sides of the property. So, so the plan is that that fencing will essentially keep the dogs being walked in there. So that's why we didn't propose extending the other fencing all the way around.
It will be safe.
It will be safe.
Could you sign in, please?
And then my second question, that also possibly they or the architects could answer, was about the signage. The site plan looks, I couldn't really see where the sign was located. It looked like it might have been located right behind the fence in the front of the property. And the fence is 62 inches high, and the sign is less than that. So it would be below the fence and behind the fence. And I was wondering about visibility. How is the customer and the public to read or see the sign? Originally, it was going to be in the top of the building, highly visible, and now it's behind the fence. So I didn't understand that.
At this time, at this time, we had considered that the fence was not to be in the right-of-way of Caltrans. So that places kind of restrictions on getting this in front of the fence. We were playing with the property line and a right-of-way line there, and one and the same, basically. So we're maintaining that fence line right up to the property line and to the right-of-way. We had no intention of placing the sign in front of the, in front of the, it would be, placing it in front of the fence would put it in the right-of-way, Caltrans' right-of-way. So we were placing it just behind the fence. I know that that, that seems contrary, but it is intended to be, I think, just a little bit larger than what is, was presented, just because of the dimensions and proportion of the signage. But nevertheless, there is also maybe an intention the owner has to place it perpendicular rather than parallel to the, to the, to the road, just so you can see, see it coming from both sides. And as far as height, I, I really hadn't addressed that with, with the fence itself, but we weren't trying to clear the, the fence line. I believe there's, I believe
I believe the code would require you to, to extend that sign. I'd have, I have to take a look, because I can't, I can't quote it verbatim, but I do know that you're, you're probably, lest you've got some wiggle room if you need to move it up. The code does allow for, you know, for the signage to be so far off the ground, off the grade.
Okay.
It's a pretty significant number.
And, yeah, and I, I think that, you know, being that they are significantly less than the, the maximum allowed, I think there's probably some room for a little adjustment if it doesn't cause anyone any problems.
So would we want to, wherever we mention signage, just say that as long as the signage is consistent with our signage ordinance, that it would be acceptable, that we're not asking to approve the specific sign design?
Well, and I guess that's, you know, that, that's up to your, you know, recommendation. Would you like me to include that language? It gives them a little flexibility? Or do you actually want to see this again before you just to review new signage?
I'd be okay with just allowing some wiggle room on the height and the overall size, as long as the general design doesn't change.
As long as the, yeah, okay.
As long as it's, yeah, within the specs. I don't have
If that's okay with, with everyone, then I can go ahead and, and make a modification to the
You okay, Kelly?
Well, I guess I have a question. No matter what, it's going to be consistent with the existing rules, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so it's not really a question of wiggle room, is it? Because they will not have to wiggle outside the room?
Oh, no, no, no. It's probably, wasn't a proper term to use. So, so they've got some flexibility with the limitations set forth in code right now. And so I think we can, you know, with some slight modifications of, of what they're proposing today, they can still, within the limitations of the code, they can still make some modifications to that signage as far as height and even square footage is concerned.
Is that going to require a change to the, to the resolutions?
It might. I'll have to review that section to see if I, I don't, I'll change my glasses.
Because of these, if we want to conclude this matter today, then we should figure out what needs to be changed.
I think I just basically said that they have to comply with, they have to be in conformance with the site plan. And the site plan, basically, well, we're approving the signage as, as proposed in the site plan, so we do have a specific sign, design, and structure approved, so I suppose we would have to find out exactly what that is that they want to modify in order for us to say exactly, yes, this is allowed.
Right, so the sign on the site plan is shown parallel to the highway, and that's not in your best interest. You do want the two-sided perpendicular sign, so maybe we can just describe that, or we can come back, we can modify it, whatever.
Hi, my name is Dean Morris, I'm the general contractor on the job site. After, being out there on, on the job site there, after looking at placement of the sign and the size of the sign, I had a small piece of cardboard, the size that was shown on here, and you're right, you couldn't see it because the fence blocked it. So I had to make up a five-foot-by-five-foot sign, which stays 25 square feet, so it's way underneath your, 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 your size limits. And if we ran it perpendicular to the road, you could see it quite a ways down, because the fence is really just fine wire. You could really see through it. So by placing it perpendicular to the road, you can see it from both angles, like 600, 700 feet. So you could see the place coming up. Putting it parallel with the fence would be, you'd probably, have to be right on top of it to see it. So I think that would resolve the issue with, with height and stuff of the sign. We could stay with the bottom minimum height and the maximum height, I don't know, I don't have a code for that, but that would work.
And that, that's going to put you close to the allowable sign size.
Yeah, 88, what was it?
You're allowed 60 square feet.
60 square feet, so we're less than half of that.
But you're not, because you're double-sided.
Double-sided.
Oh, double-sided.
Both sides count, yeah.
So we're 50 square feet.
So a five-by-six maximum on one side, so that's within your
Okay.
Constraints there. So Gina, what, what do we need to do to get them taken care of today?
This, this condition shows up in the resolution, draft resolution 2019-05 for the conditional use permit. I think that's what we're concerned with, paragraph, you know, condition I-5, 1-5?
Should have been under the PD.
All constructions shall be in conformance with your approved site plan.
Right. So I, I think what we really need is, is a revised sign plan. I suppose if you want to table this to the next meeting and, and make your recommendation at that time with the, with the new revised sign plan. That way, it becomes the, the absolute approved record.
I, I'm worried they're wilting over there.
Well, you know, that, that's the, the purpose of the plan development. And those were the plans that were submitted, so nobody ever said that those, that the sign was too small and that we were going to modify it. So I don't have any modified plans. And what I can't do is have you approve this set of plans under this permit and then, then bring to us through a building permit, a completely different sign, even though it's still within the limitations of the code, you are specifically approving the site development as proposed on these plans. So if we don't have before us what they intend to build, then I think we need a set of revised plans for your consideration.
It's the PD that is driving this.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's the PD and the CUP. The conditions of each. Now, the question arises then, how would the City of Angels' views get taken care of on this change?
I can certainly consult with Amy Augustine to find out if they have any issues over the increased signage. My guess is that they're not going to have any issues. She didn't comment on the original sign itself, so I don't think it's going to be, I would anticipate there not being a problem, but certainly, through the process, I can consult with her to, to ensure that the city has no issues with increased signage.
So it sounds like if the applicant can live with, are we going to meet again in two weeks? Do you know?
Um, yes.
Okay. Could we get this moved?
Absolutely. Because the only thing they would have to do, I mean, that's, it's up to Andy. I mean, Andy's the one that's going to have to draw a new sign plan. And that requires the applicant to absolutely know exactly what they want to do, so they don't have to come back and modify the permit.
Right, so both the placement and the design of the sign, so both the site plan and the sign itself are exactly what you planned to do.
Yeah.
So we can approve it and hopefully approve everything.
I think that's probably what we're going to have to do. I mean, we could come up with language that would
Well, but it doesn't replace what we have on, in the plans themselves. I can, I can, I can change the language in the resolutions all I want, but it doesn't change what's actually illustrated in the plans that you're approving. And the way we kind of operate now is we actually have an approved set of plans that we maintain in the file for consistency and future reference.
Plus, given the fact that we need, the county needs to consult with the City of Angels
Right.
With respect to this, which can't be done right this minute, it looks to me as if we don't have a lot of choice other than to
Yeah, because they specifically requested to keep the PD, so they care.
Yes.
Was there any other public comment? Ms. Platt, did you have anything further?
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Can we, can we proceed with respect to general plan amendments?
It's really
And the zoning amendment?
Oh, can you take action?
Yeah, on the other portion.
I would suppose so, because they are standalone actions. I can't forward it on to the board without the entire package. I have tentatively scheduled this through IQM2 for a board hearing on March 26th. That's the earliest meeting I can actually schedule. I don't know, without looking at the schedule, without looking at the board's schedule, if the delayed, if us delaying this action will delay the planning, the board, the appointment of the board meeting. Worst-case scenario, it would be the first meeting in April.
Now, if, if the planning commission were to proceed with respect to the general plan amendment and the zoning amendment today, and if the planning commission were to approve those two things, those are the only two that actually have to go to the board, aren't they?
This is a project, all of the actions, the actions below the conditional use permit specifically, cannot be approved without amending the general plan and without amending the zoning. So you can't make a recommendation, or you cannot approve, this, this commission cannot approve the use permit without the board approving the general plan and the zoning. So the whole thing has to go up to the board as one project. The plan development may be the only exception, but here again, you're approving site development for a use that's technically not permitted in the current zoning.
I think that's why Kelly's trying to move the general plan and zoning on, because those are the things that really, that need to go to
Well, but we're not going to get
So if we did them today, they could stay on the agenda, and then the question is, would it, would
But they have to hear the, they have to hear the, the use permit and the plan development anyway. So
Why?
Huh? Because you don't have the authority to approve them.
I think, I think there's a little bit of confusion. I, I don't hear the commission saying that they're intending to approve a CUP or zoning amendment until the board has already approved
Exactly.
The general plan or the zoning. But we, but because, so I think what's being recommended, and I'm not clear on what, and what the legal issue would be, but maybe there's more things on your end, Gina, that I'm not aware of. If the board approved those first two pieces, and then, then the planning commission would have the ability to approve the zoning and the plan development, and if those things wouldn't have to go to the board, because, again, they wouldn't do that until the board already
Wouldn't we have to bring them back in a separate meeting subsequent to the adoption of the general plan? So that's still a delay.
Yes, but I think that the intent of the planning commission right now is finding a way to give them some assurance that the two most important aspects, the general plan amendment and the zoning change
I don't
Are moving forward. Is that important? I mean, or if we just looked at the whole thing in two weeks and kept it clean, does that serve your purpose just as well?
Well, I don't think we're, I don't think we're gaining anything, though, because even, even if, even if delaying the action on the PD two weeks, meaning it delays everything two weeks, and I can't get, I can't get the entire package to the board until April anyway, I still would have to bring the use permit and the plan development back to you subsequent to the approval by the board in March, which is still going to be the same timeframe. I would rather keep the whole thing together.
I mean, for them to have all four of their actions
Yes.
Completely
That is the project.
Exactly the same amount of time. There will be no gain.
No.
Our, our thing, what Kelly and Julie and I were all thinking was, if we could move those, the two important ones to the board, to not take any chance of not being able to get them a way to give them some assurance that the two most important aspects, the general plan amendment and the zoning change.
I don't...
Are moving forward. Is that important? I mean, or if we just looked at the whole thing in two weeks and kept it clean, does that serve your purpose just as well?
Well, I don't think we're, I don't think we're gaining anything, though, because even if, even if delaying the action on the PD two weeks, meaning it delays everything two weeks, and I can't get, I can't get the entire package to the board until April anyway, I still would have to bring the use permit and the plan development back to you subsequent to the approval by the board in March, which is still going to be the same timeframe. I would rather keep the whole thing together.
You mean, for them to have all four of their actions completed?
Yes, that is the project.
Exactly the same amount of time. There will be no gain.
No.
Our, our, think, what Kelly and Julie and I were all thinking was if we could move those, the two important ones to the board, to not take any chance of not being able to get them on the next agenda the way you originally had scheduled.
I would say there's probably still a chance that I can't, I mean, I've already saved my place, so to speak, through the, through the computer system. Everything is, you know, computer-generated now through the board. So I've already, I've already started my board packet, and I've already tentatively saved a spot on that agenda. I haven't submitted it because we have to wait for this, for your recommendation before I can do that. But like I said, not having the calendar in front of me, I don't know what the submittal date is. I might be a little late, but here again, I don't think you're going to gain anything, even if we split them up because of the subsequent planning commission hearing that's going to have to take place.
So you would, you would prefer that the planning commission continue this to the next meeting, which I guess is what, March 14th?
Yes.
March 14th, so we would take action on all four matters at that time, and thinking there would be that the, those four could all go to the board on the 26th of March?
That is my, that is my intent, is to push everything forward to the board on the 26th. If I can still meet that deadline for submittal of the IQM II packet by, subsequent to the next planning commission hearing, then that is what we will do. I will have everything built and ready to go. Alls we need is your resolutions and, you know, the slight revision to the signage plan, and, you know, it's just a matter of dropping it in and hitting submit. But like I said, I don't have that schedule before me. Generally, what is it, in at three weeks in advance of the, of the hearing?
For the board?
Yeah, for the IQM II packet.
I'm actually texting Diana now.
Okay.
And that was 3/26, you said?
Uh-huh. I want to say submittal of the IQM II packet is due on Friday the 8th.
Which, that's not before our next board meeting, our next commission meeting, is it? I'm getting an answer.
Yeah, because we're already at February 28th. That'll be the week before our next hearing.
Yeah.
Of the planning commission.
So what does that mean in terms of the schedule?
So if we don't, if you're unable to make a recommendation today, and we have to bring this back to the next planning commission meeting on the 14th, submittal of the IQM II packet is actually the week before you are going to take action on the items, which means that I will have to then postpone, I'll have to push out that board meeting to the next board meeting in April. But the entire packet will go before them instead of splitting it up and then subsequently having to come back to you sometime in April to hear the PD and the use permit again.
Diana said that the deadline for the 3/26 meeting is next Friday the 8th.
Okay.
And it really depends on what happens at the 3/14 meeting, so not really, I don't think.
Unless, of course, Julie, since the PD is kind of a standalone thing, it doesn't, it's not relying on the use permit, or the zoning, or the general plan, because we're only addressing aesthetics and site development, is it possible that we can push the general plan amendment, the zoning amendment, and the use permit forward to the board with only consideration of the plan development at the planning commission level?
Well, but the draft resolution for the CUP also requires construction to be in conformance with the approved site plan. And, so that's, that would have to be dealt with. But I'm still not clear whether, timing-wise, it's better to take care of the two matters that must go before the board, which would ensure that the board does everything it needs to do, assuming it goes that way, on the 26th of March. And then the commission would, as soon as thereafter, we could take up the other two matters, being the CUP and the plan development permit.
So if we don't make the 26th, the next board hearing is April 8th, and the next planning commission hearing is April 11th. So I think it's in our, in our best interest to keep them all together, and therefore, if we absolutely cannot push, push it forward through IQM II, and I can talk to Diana, there may be some flexibility with that. Of course, Peter's not here. I know what our departmental policy is, is that we don't submit board items until we have the action by the planning commission. So I'm not real comfortable with saying, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and submit a board packet without having your recommendation, even though we generally, I think, can say that it sounds as though there isn't going to be an issue. So the worst-case scenario is that this whole package goes to the board on April 8th, opposed to you taking action, or the board taking action of the general plan amendment and the zoning amendment on March 26th, and then subsequently you taking action on the plan development and then having to come back.
We'd have, we'd have to wait the period for the general plan amendment to take a notch before we could do anything for the PD anyway.
Right, technically you've got to...
So that would actually push it further out, right?
Right.
Thirty minutes.
Right.
So that, I think that tells us we need to keep them together.
I don't, you're not gaining anything. It's just us to keep the whole thing together.
It sounds like we're going to be constructing the sign in the next week or two.
Well, so, so the thinking is then that we could continue all these matters to the 14th of March?
We could continue all of these matters to the, to the next commission on the 14th.
Then we would have total commission action on all four, and then the board could get all four on the 6th of...
On April, sorry, I can't see. That would be Tuesday, April 9th.
And I think, it sounds to me like that's probably the best way to proceed.
I think that's your best option if we're looking to expedite.
Okay, so there's a suggestion that we continue this matter. Is there any public comment on the, on the continuance?
I just want to thank you all for going through all of this. I'm not the board chair, and I really appreciate the time that you take, and I will find a way to yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Is there a motion then to continue all four of these matters to the next planning commission meeting?
I'd like to see the commission complete their discussion, just in case any of you guys have any other questions, but just to make sure that if there's anything else they need to respond to, we can let them know now and not surprise them two weeks from now.
Okay, well, I think we've concluded public comment.
Right, but...
On the, on the...
But not commissioner comment.
Right. So I'll bring, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, if any, and questions.
Look, Colleen brought up the two things, which was the signage and was our actual fenced enclosure, so we've discussed those to death.
Okay, well, I will have changes to the resolution, which have been communicated to staff, but I think we should take them up at the next meeting. And I would think that action on these matters would proceed one at a time, rather than all at once, and so. You're apparently not having to be any more discussion amongst the commissioners on the merits here, who are about to be questioning if we continue it.
Again, there's two, two other commissioners who might have comments anyway, so.
The thing is, is that they can't participate in the continued discussion unless they have heard the entirety of this. So they'll have to either listen to the entire proceedings, or, or it'll have, recuse themselves from the next hearing.
So I have no further questions for the applicants, and no further things for us to discuss.
Commissioner Henderson is studying here.
So I'm clear, I'm new to this, so the whole question is over the placement and the size of the sign, correct?
The placement and the size of the sign is, is...
Is one of the hang-ups on this, all four of these?
Yes, yeah. So they've expressed the desire to have a larger sign than what they've proposed and what you were prepared to make a recommendation on.
And perpendicular.
Right, and the location. So now they're moving from, from a single-sided sign to a double-sided sign, increasing the square footage, and basically spinning it in the other direction so you can see it coming along the highway.
Does CUP, does it affect everything?
It's, the plan development requirement, requires the approval of a specific site plan, and because that overlay is here, they need to amend the site plan to reflect what's actually going to be on the ground in order for the planning commission to approve the plan development permit.
So we could theoretically approve all the others, but Gina's saying it's not in our best interest to separate them, yes.
I understand that. Okay. I'm just thinking, if they left it the same as, how...
If they leave it the same, then they would actually have to come before you with a new application to modify the permit.
But they could move forward right now if they left it the same, but later on when they change the sign.
Absolutely, but I'm assuming that they don't want to pay for another plan development permit and go through this whole process again. I think it's worth waiting the two weeks and just taking care of it under this application.
I'm just trying to think of a way to...
Yeah. Yeah, if it wasn't for the PD combining zone, we wouldn't be having this discussion, because we would simply be reviewing that sign permit through a building permit application process and being, you know, less than the maximum allowed signage, then there wouldn't be an issue, and we would be signing off the building permit, and they could instruct their sign. But unfortunately, they're in the PD combining zone, which really kind of throws a whole monkey wrench into the whole thing, yeah.
So I am prepared to move that we continue this to our next regularly scheduled meeting to give the applicant time to modify the site plan and the site design and get it back to us, and for Gina to contact Angels Camp, talk to Amy, and make sure they have no objections to that change.
We have a motion to continue in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? You're in our position, so all three commissioners present voted for it. The other two are absent. Sorry. I think that was the best we could do. Okay. Action items, I don't see any on the agenda. Informational items, non-study session, none. Are there any commissioning reports?
No.
Any planning director reports? Just so we're clear now, the, the matter for the selection of the planning commission chairperson and vice-chairperson will be taken up at the next meeting?
Yes.
I don't know that we had a formal motion on that. Do we need one?
I moved that. Do we need to do that?
I thought you moved to continue it already.
Yeah, you did.
Good. So we're taken care of. All right, in this meeting?
I just would like to bring to your attention that the meeting was posted online starting at 9:30, not 9 o'clock as it did start, and therefore I wasn't able to make my public comment because it showed up at the time that it's stated on the county website. So I would prefer to speak to all five of you, so it's okay, I don't need to speak now, but I just would like to point that out so the...
Thank you.
Public doesn't miss their opportunity to comment.
I think we know where the problem lies. It's posted on the board, if you go to the board of superv, I stumbled upon it yesterday. If you go to the board of supervisors' meetings, it says planning commission now that we're on the IQM II live thing. And so I'm assuming that it's probably rolled into the board agenda, which technically...